Good evening and welcome to the August fourteenth. The August fourteenth meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I advise those in attendance and those participating that their image, voice, or telephone number may be captured for the record. Let me introduce the folks. Do we have an audience, Leanne?
We do not.
Okay, well, we won't. Let's skip introductions. The first item, do we have minutes or something right off the bat?
Yes, we have minutes from July tenth.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from July tenth meeting that were circulated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, wait a minute, let me see here.
I wasn't here. Can I not second?
Pat, Pat and Keith can't vote.
Right. You're out of luck.
Can't accept those meeting minutes.
Can't vote on them unless we get Sue and Jenny. We can circle back if Sue and Ginny join us.
Then I'll withdraw my motion for now.
And Pat withdraws her second.
Yes, indeed.
And what's next on the agenda, Leanne?
Uh, warrants, which Danny is not.
And he's not here.
Yeah.
And there's none that we're aware of.
I'm not aware of anything. I haven't seen anything. Um, next is communications received.
Have we received any communications?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
But I did wanna, I don't know if this is the time to to put it, I guess it would be communications, but um, for the ethics training, I'm still waiting for Pat. Pat, yours expired back in February.
I passed it in and gave it to Eloise.
Oh, okay. I never got a copy of that, so.
Yeah, Leanne, I did it maybe a month or two ago.
Okay, I'll look for that. And Len, you were due in June.
I had, yeah, I tried to do it this week from home. I got as far as creating an account. And then I went to launch it. I just get, you know, those um, squares going round and round and round and round for maybe five minutes. So I'm gonna wait till I'm down the Cape to do it.
Okay.
Yeah. It says it takes about an hour. Is that what it took you?
At least, yeah, I would say just about an hour. Um, very, it's the same thing we do every year, boring, more boring. And um, I do have a copy probably, Leanne, but it would take me a while to find it.
All right, I'll let you find it. Yeah, but I I believe you, so um, I usually keep a copy of the um.
Yeah, no, I I didn't.
As well, but, okay.
And the great address. Okay.
Yeah, it's just a good idea, Pat. If anyone questions, there's two places they can go that you actually filed. Um.
Well, I take it every year for the federal government, too.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, you always have to take that stupid thing, yeah.
Oh, God. Okay, well, I'll get that done shortly when I go back down the Cape, which probably won't be until early next week.
Okay.
If my grandson ever comes to mow my grass.
Oh, here comes Sue.
Um. What else was I gonna ask under communications? Oh, when when is closing for next month?
Tonight.
Okay, so as of right now, we have nothing for next month, right?
We have nothing as of right now, and I'm not expecting anything. That's not to say. Um, the only thing, well, Three Gates Pond, but I don't think they have their act together or are gonna pursue it. And anybody else who files would be without the building commissioner's letter, so it would just get denied anyways. As being completely.
Who did you say you thought might be?
Three Gates Pond Road.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Restaurant. He still wants to put his business in there, but he doesn't want to spend any more money or follow the appropriate steps.
Okay, do we know whatever happened to the car wash?
Um, Rich just said, um, I think this week or last week, they were in touch with him, asking what did they need to do to make it work? So I don't know, how did he put it, if he's, what he told them or what he, he kinda laughed it, laughed it off, I guess, with me anyways. Um, what'd he say? Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what he said, but something about the car wash and that they were looking to find out.
What the procedure would be?
Oh, that, he just wrote, "The car wash people called and are looking for ways to make it work." So. So that's where that sits, I don't.
I'd push them off to the planning board, especially where the planning board is writing some new bylaws. Um, you know, if there's hope there, who knows? Um, I wanted to ask, Susanna, you haven't had a chance to attend any planning board meetings recently, have you?
I went last night.
Oh, good. Anything interesting?
Um, there was an ANR, I I don't know what happened before seven forty-five, because that's when I showed up. Um, they had an ANR for a tiny piece of land that's at the stoplight at Donald Lynch Boulevard and River Road West. They're just taking the piece that's in Marlboro off. And so now, instead of having one parcel that is in both Marlboro and Berlin, now there's a little piece that's gonna be in Marlboro, that's its own property. And then the the remaining twenty-five acres will be in Berlin.
Where is that?
At the light for Donald Lynch Boulevard and River Road West.
So that's right by the junction of two ninety?
Yes, uh, from what I understand, the Solomon Pond Mall is interested in purchasing that that little chunk that's in Marlboro, because that's where their sign is. Or somebody's sign is.
Okay, this isn't the hunk of property that caused all the problems with the, um, no, okay.
No, 'cause that's a little further down, that's where the DCU or whatever that.
Okay, that's right, DCU, yep.
Yeah. No, no, this is, this is, as you're sitting on River Road West about to get on two ninety west, it's right there. There's like that that little gravel driveway that kinda just goes down a hundred feet and stops. And then that's where the the guy had his camp out and back.
His trail is still up there?
Yeah, I think so. It's very crooked.
Is it on the west side or the east of the east side of Solomon Pond Road?
West towards the end of the state?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, so it's across the street, uh, okay, from where I'm thinking, okay.
Yes, it's a little grassy area.
Interesting.
Yep. So, yeah.
After that.
Thing else, did they talk about redoing the zoning or anything last night?
Uh, only indirectly. Um, the reason I attended was because on their agenda was discussion of the new um ADU law that was passed last week. So now. So now, I mean, you guys are aware of this, right, that any single-family home in Massachusetts can now have an attached or detached ADU, and they don't have to go through zoning, uh, special permit for it.
Oh, yeah.
That's a hundred and twenty-six pages we got sent, right?
Yes, but you have to, you only have to read page thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Thank you.
Because most of it is.
This ain't happening.
Yeah, most of it is funding. Um, yeah, so.
So what does, what does the ADU stand for, apartment?
Accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you. Boy, that'll take a lot away from us.
Yeah, and that that whole issue that was with um Lincoln Road is now a moot point.
You don't think this is gonna end up in court forever?
Because?
No, that's why the state did it.
Oh, yes, but you could have individual towns go against it, too, right?
They would, they would have to sue to go against it. We we are allowed to um pass reasonable restrictions. Uh, we can require things like site plan review. Any accessory dwelling unit, whether it is inside the existing home or um attached in an addition or detached, must still comply with all Title V. So the the new thing now is you, we've seen in the past where people put a deed restriction on their house, saying it will never be more than three bedrooms, so that they can put a big addition on and not have it, you know, count against them, or because they wanna put an in-law apartment in, but their septic system won't allow for another bedroom, so they deed restrict the rest of the house. So there's um conjecture that that will, we'll see more of those deed restrictions, which are extremely hard to enforce. Especially if you never sell your house, how do you know what you're doing and what's to stop someone from, say, sleeping in an office? Um, so there was that. I know that there was discussion that the people who would most likely, it was one person's opinion that the people who would most likely take advantage of this new ADU are the people that own single-family homes and currently rent them out. So they'd be more than happy to put in an in-law apartment and rent that out also.
What's the percentage that it can be of the floor area or anything like that?
Uh.
Nine hundred square feet or one-third of the size of the total size of the house.
Whichever is small, whichever is.
Whatever's smaller.
So it's one-third or um.
Up to nine hundred feet.
Nine hundred square feet.
Yep.
Well, I would think that they would still want some kind of control um for apartments. I'm just thinking of how many we've given out. I mean, there's a lot of them out there. And then there'd be no restrictions on who could live there, right?
Correct.
Well, that would probably not hurt our ten percent.
Well, here's the thing, it won't count.
Right?
So, because the only thing that counts towards your affordable housing are projects that have been subsidized. So the only way that these ADUs will get subsidized is that people who want to install um or build, rather, uh, a handicap accessible. And then they can get, they can get funding from the state for that. There was also discussion about reaching out to the, our state representative or the executive office of housing and livable communities, who was, who headed up this this new bill, and asking for clarification because it's, it is gonna greatly affect any of the towns that have, you know, gone and gotten their their ten percent affordable housing. If people are uncontrollably putting in accessory dwelling units, you are gonna get under ten percent really fast if they're not counting towards affordable housing, which is what they should be doing, because that's why they put this law into effect in the first place. But there's no, there's no way to control that. So the the planning board is hoping that more details are gonna be coming out within the next few months.
Well, I'm just thinking of all the apartments we already have. And if those folks now are not covered under our restrictions, I mean, that's an awful lot of more dwellings. I mean, we must have, what, a hundred or so, at least, accessory apartments?
Well, it depends how they count them, though. If, if it's an in-law, if it's an in-law apartment, um, is, does that count as a part of the overall dwelling? The overall house, or is it counted as a separate dwelling? So when you're counting for how many? If you're counting your total number of dwelling units, is a house with an in-law apartment one dwelling unit or two?
I'm going with it's two, because they're they're talking about these, these units now no longer have to be for in-laws, so they're.
Well, well, but.
But you can't put a second one. You can't put a second.
Well, that that doesn't matter, though. Well, my point is, if your only entrance to that apartment is through the main house, does it count as a separate dwelling unit, or is it still part of the main dwelling unit?
That is true, because they do have a a line in there that says it has to be, it has to have its own entrance. But to be honest, if it's gonna, if if you have an in-law apartment and it's complying with the building code, it has to have two means of egress.
Yeah, we we require um.
Well, egress is a window, so that doesn't necessarily mean.
No. That the two means of egress is for a dwelling unit. The emergency egress is for a bedroom within a house, and that window has to be a certain size. You can't have a house with just one door.
And if you have, it's an apartment, you, you can't just have the stairs going upstairs, you've gotta be have a second way out of that basement. You do a good job, Susanna.
Um, thank you.
Thank you for going.
Well, they're gonna have to figure all that out as far as what counts and how it counts, and I don't see how you're gonna ever get them to count as an actual affordable unit. Because that's gonna, they're gonna have to follow the guide, the state's guidelines as far as what they can charge for rent on it.
That's a, well, that's another question that needs to be posed to someone who's in the know. I don't know if this needs to go to the newly formed uh, housing commission that we have in town, which I believe is Lisa Wysocki, maybe Tim Wheeler. Um, for what counts towards our affordable housing stock, I believe that's Eloise that takes care of that. So these questions kinda need to go to her. There are, there's more questions about this because um, say, for example, condominium development area, for example, Highland Street, I can't think of the name of what that development is. But those are condos on one big property. So there's no clear definition on whether a condominium is a dwell, is a single-family unit or not, because they have a shared septic system and a shared well. So how do you, how do you put an accessory dwelling unit on that?
And you don't know what the bylaws say for that particular, the homeowners association, whatever their agreement is either.
Right, and so the the new law doesn't define any of that right now. The the second issue is um, just for us, is Capes of Berlin, which the way he did it, because of uh septic and wells, each of those units has its own piece of land. It's, it's all on its own property. So do they fall into a single-family housing? But it's also a forty B project, so how does that affect the forty B? And how does that, and we're back to how does that count for our um affordable housing stock? So I'm just really hoping that that, uh, what is the name of that place we go to in March, the CM or the conference there?
CPTC?
Yeah, that one. I I'm hoping there's gonna be a few workshops on how to deal with this.
Well, write them a note and tell them you're interested in it.
I don't even know who to contact. So if you do, I will.
Yeah, if you just go out to, what is it? Um, MAS CPTC? I think it's dot org. Is their website, and I think there's a way to contact them.
MAS CPTC? Yeah, okay, that works. It is dot org. Okay.
Did they say anything about? Did they say anything about um uh, updating the zoning bylaw?
The only, they just mentioned that it was something that needed to be addressed as they rewrote it. Oh, they did mention um, somebody that they talk with a lot, asking them to clarify this new law. Whoever, whoever's helping them with the bylaws, I guess.
This is kinda scary. I understand the intent. But I don't think all of the blocks are in order, as far as, you know, Healy wants to produce more housing. Well, that's not necessarily what we need. You know, some of the other towns may need it, um, especially in the metro area. I would think that this would, you know, create more housing. But it's scary out here.
Yeah, it does seem to be geared more to towns that have the infrastructure, public water, public sewer. Because then there's no question of tying in, but it does specifically say that um you have to comply with all of Title V. And because we're in the Neshoba Valley Board of Health, they are very strict with their Title V's.
But they only get one shot. You create an apartment, okay? And um, the only time now that you have to really have your septic tested or anything is if you go to sell the place.
But could you get the building permit to add an additional bedroom, you'd have to go through the septic approval process, so you still have to go through all that for the building permit to decide of it.
Yeah, you don't, it it's not like you can just walk out the door and start doing this.
Well, I mean, I'm sure there'll be some people that will will convert an existing bedroom into their apartment, so the the number of bedrooms on the septic system may not change. But, you know, if somebody tries to add a bedroom or add an exterior ADU, and they only, if they have a three-bedroom septic system and they have three bedrooms in their primary house, they add a external ADU or detached ADU, they've gotta upgrade their septic system before, you know, they can get a certificate of occupancy for that unit.
Gee, I should consider this.
Well, see, that, I I started to do that just to see how the law works. I was like, okay, let's pretend that I wanna put um, an eight-hundred-square-foot modular home on this property. And how would I do that, and how would it tie in with the septic system? Well, we can't tie in to the existing septic system because we're, we don't have any extra bedrooms. And also because I wanna do a separate building, I would have to build a whole new septic system for it and a whole new well, because it would be too far away. And because we have a conservation restriction, it has to be with inside of that. And then you have to have all your um, regulations, your your setbacks still apply. So your house and your septic system and your well still have to have all the setbacks as a regular, as a regular house lot. So where someone has a small non-conforming lot, and we have a square footage, a a percentage of open space for each lot, you can't add on if it's gonna increase the non-conformance of your property. The only thing you can do is put the in-law apartment inside your existing house. So there's, it, for example, uh, Carterville with all those little tiny house lots, they would be hard-pressed to be able to do this.
I have permission for six bedrooms.
Get on it.
There you go.
Well, back, I think Doug, what was Doug's last name? I forget. Was building inspector. And we were putting a second story on. And of course, I had to have the septic looked at. Well, Doug came out and said, or looked at the plans and said, um, what's this um porch or whatever coming from the second story? Are you making it a two-family? And I said, no, we thought the sliding glass doors on the two bedrooms would look strange going to a twenty-foot drop. And he told me, he said, well, I don't consider anything except a kitchen and a bathroom. Everything else is a bedroom. So I had to get the septic system approved for six bedrooms, which, by the way, it was. I would like to have wrung his neck back then. Oh, this happened like hmm, seven or eight days before the contractor was gonna start work.
I don't really foresee this generating a whole lot of ADUs in town. I mean, there'll probably be a handful, but I don't think there's gonna be any more than, much more than we currently have.
But it sort of depends on how many in-law apartments existed. You know, there's a lot of people that did the in-law and grandma died, and then you can't do anything with it, right? So it just kinda sat there. Yes, a lot of people, you know, did it illegally, but there are some honest people in town. I mean, I have an in-law apartment in my basement that I don't have any family wanting to live here. Would I wanna turn it into income? Maybe, I don't know. Didn't really think about it until now, but now it's an option.
Yeah, but I don't think there's that many of those. I mean, there's, there's some, but, you know.
Just in the time I've been on the board, there's been at least a half dozen that that we've been a part of, in-law apartments.
So there's probably fifteen or twenty out there. They're, like you said, are former units that. But it's, it's not like there's gonna be thousands of them.
No.
Well, I think I agree with Keith. I'm a little concerned about people. The restrictions for an accessory apartment or an in-law apartment, you know, was either relatives or uh low income, you know, it had restrictions on it. Well, now all those restrictions, restrictions will go away.
Yeah, okay. And?
Well, again, we have another housing unit. And again, we come as um Susanna said, these aren't gonna count as apartments per se for our ten percent, but they are gonna affect our ten percent. If we have a hundred or a hundred and fifty of these, and all of a sudden, there's no such thing as an accessory apartment, just an apartment, that's a housing unit. And um, if it's not, if we're not able to require it to be low income, okay, then it's gonna be affecting the percentage of low and moderate income housing we have available.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's why we need, that's why we need to hear from someone in the know. We don't know if they're gonna re-revise the forty B standards for, and what counts towards affordable stock.
And again, with those things, it would depend, too, I think, what the homeowners association said. Whether or not there was a restriction in there.
Yes, but what I'm saying is that, what you're talking about, the additional, the additional housing units that are now gonna count against the ten percent. We don't know if they're gonna redefine their definitions, only because the whole point of these ADUs was for affordable housing. So why wouldn't they count?
Well, I I think there's a potential twisting of terms there. I don't, the intent was not for affordable housing. The intent was to increase the amount of housing at lower rates in the state. But they're not, they're not qualified as affordable housing.
Well, it's called the Affordable Homes Act, so.
Yeah. But the, what qualifies as affordable housing is very strictly limited by the state. But the, what qualifies as affordable housing is very strictly limited by the state. And I, none of these appear to be, there's nothing in any of this that requires those meet any of those standards.
It sounds like we don't have the answers. We have a lot of questions. We're not gonna know this stuff until we get deeper into it and we actually have.
Well, but you know, the, the common sense of this is. If we have, if we have someone build, they have to have ten percent has to be affordable housing, right? Well, what happens when you can only put in one unit?
It don't affect every city and town in the entire state. I just think that. That they will have a lot more answers, especially as you get into certain communities. I'm sorry, they're not gonna, they're gonna allow little sheds and conquer it all over the place. I still think that it will come out more defined. Down the road a little bit.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it will. But they said, I, I don't think the, the intent was not to have all these ADUs as. To be affordable housing units under the forty B program.
No, it's just to in- in- increase the housing in general. I, I think from our, from our town standpoint, you, I mean, you're right, Concord and Cambridge and Lexington have different needs than we do. Um, but from our town standpoint, just given the history of the developers and the commercial investors. Um, that are gobbling up all the first-time buyer. Category housing, that's what's been driving in, you know, in my world anyways. My daughter can't buy anything here. So I would say for us in our town is to watch those group of aggressive um, developers. And investors and see what they're gonna do, because they, you know, we should act quickly if suddenly. The developer who's got ten properties in town turns it into twenty, just for the sake of doubling income, you know, which. Seems like everything they're doing is, is um, income motivated. So why wouldn't they do that? Um, you know, it doesn't take much for them to put in another door and another driveway. Um, or cut one up and two. So that'll be interesting to see what happens in a short period of time.
Throw a few appliances in one of the rooms and then call it an accessory. Yep. Okay, I think we've beat that one to death, but thanks for um, letting us know about it, Susanna. Uh, there were a lot of senators or and representatives signed on to that bill.
I, I have no idea. It, I mean, it passed in February. And it's been six months, so now it goes into effect.
It passed both the House and the Senate.
It's a law now, yes.
And it was signed by the governor?
Yes.
Wow.
Which is why we really need to hear from someone that knows how this is gonna work.
Wow. They keep sneaking things in there. Um, I don't know if I mentioned to you folks. And I was torn as to how I was gonna do this, but. Um, they're going after the um. Artificial turf for fields in Massachusetts. There's two, at least two bills I'm aware of. But there's several of them out there. I don't know if you've seen on the news. There's three chemicals that are produced. By this carpet, if you will, that's put on the artificial turf. And they've been deemed uh, dangerous. So the bills basically say if you have. An athletic field with artificial turf. The next time. They, when you put one in, they tell you it's either ten to twelve years. You'd have to put a new um, carpet down. Or maybe as much as fifteen, depending upon the use. When you go to do that, you can no longer put that carpet back down. And in, in addition to that. These fields were all built with um, retention. Um, water retention around their exterior. And these chemicals have leached into that, those. Detention pools, if you will. And they have to be dug up until you don't find any more of those chemicals. So our superintendent, well, my superintendent. Sent out a note asking us to, you know, contact our legislators. And say, you know, vote against this bill. I have mixed feelings. I mean, this is a health and safety issue on one thing. Um. And evidently, the science is in fact there. But it's gonna cost a small fortune and the state's not offering up any money. To change that carpet can clo- cost half a million dollars. Well, if we have to go back to, you know. Um, regular turf. And, and most of the bills say. Um, I'm trying to think, any governmental school. Um. Anything the government has it. In other words, if you're a private entity, you could have the out of, you know, like Foxborough. Could have the artificial turf. But it's kind of scary because it's gonna cost a lot of money. Now, it shouldn't affect ACABET for maybe another five or six years. But if you know a good entrepreneur, he should go out and create one of those carpets. That doesn't have those chemicals in it. And he may be making a fortune. It's funny, I initially, when ACABET went to. The artificial turf, I voted against it, but not for the chemicals. At the time, there were a great number of injuries caused on the harder turf. So I was not up to putting the kind of money. I mean, this was over a million dollars to put this stuff down. Um, I was not at all in favor of spending the money to do this. But now it may cost us a fortune to go back to the way it was. Again, we're not gonna have to deal with it for a few years, but I think we have to plan for it. Does anybody know what the case is up um, at Berlin-Bolston, up at Dehonto?
Uh, if, if I can, can I just make a motion that we close the hearing or the meeting and?
Yeah, anything else?
Doesn't seem to be anything.
What about availability for next month?
Unknown. I may look at my schedule.
It doesn't look like unless someone files at the last minute tonight. As if we're gonna have any um. Petition before us.
Why, why are we holding meetings when we have no sched- nothing scheduled? Yeah.
Because, well, this is just my personal feeling. If anyone at any time wants to attend a ZBA meeting, they can. We have canceled at least one meeting in the past, but if you look over the last four months, we haven't had anything. And I just.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I just don't feel that we shouldn't meet for like four months.
We didn't used to, Lynn. If we didn't have anything, we never had a meeting.
Right, and I don't have any problem with doing that for like a month, okay? But when it gets to be four consecutive months that we don't have anything. I just feel we oughta, you know, especially where it's via Zoom. It affords.
Well, can we switch it to like once every mother then and, and at least have one or two often row? If we don't have anything?
Sure.
And we could take a vote on it, but just for time frame.
Okay, well.
Vote yes.
Okay, I vote yes.
Okay, well, let's do this. If we don't have anything next month, which is September. Let's cancel that meeting, but regardless of whether we have something or not, we'll have a meeting in October. Does that sound good?
Well, yeah, you can put up a notice for it with an agenda. And yeah, that sounds fine. So at least no September.
Well, if we don't have anything, we can cancel the September meeting. But let's hold it in October. Just so that we, you know. Again, if I looked out at a board and they weren't meeting for four months, I'd begin to wonder.
You worried about getting fired?
Um, no, actually, that might be a pleasantry, but.
Loss of benefits and pension, yep.
But I, I do think we owe it to the public to be here on a, at least semi-regular basis. Should they choose to come and ask us questions? Now, that doesn't happen very much. But um, I think going like the last four months without a meeting. Um, but I hear you. I know it's a pain in the neck.
I, I mean, to be honest, I get questions just in passing and, or, or by email.
Yes, yeah, I'm sure you do.
Well, that's a start. So can I make a motion to skip Septembers?
We just need to wait until after the town clerk closes tonight be, in, just in case there is anything that's on the agenda. But I will live by those rules. That if we don't have anything for September, we'll cancel September's meeting. And then, but we will hold one in October regardless. And it will probably be. Um, apropos, because we are having a special town meeting in December, right?
I don't know. Unknown.
Let me see, I thought I wrote it down.
Leanne said something, but I didn't hear it.
I said, I, I believe we are. Chris Keith is in attendance if we want to ask her.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's not putting her hand up.
Maybe she's not really there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that this, um, oh, this Chris, she'll know the answer.
We, we are still planning to have a mem- uh, meeting. A town meeting in December. Um, I mean, it's not a, it's not an absolute, but that's what the plan is.
Do we know what is planned to be on the agenda for December?
Um. I think we're gonna talk about it at one of our next select board meetings. Um, there are some, there are some things that we've come across in the last um, couple of meetings that. We need to have um, addressed at a, a town meeting. So. Um, if you have anything, please bring it to our attention.
Okay, do we know what the deadline is for submitting an article?
I do not know that yet, but um, I believe Kristen would be able to tell you.
Okay, just in case we need to pass a quick article to address um. To require a site plan review for any of these ADUs that come under the new law.
Yeah.
Were you aware of the ADU law, Chris?
No, I wasn't. I was, that was interesting.
That's gonna.
Yeah.
Firestorm, yep.
You know, it's, it's too bad that, um, you know, the people that make the laws don't actually understand everybody's. Position, you know, in the certain towns.
Yeah, the differences in the communities.
Right.
I mean, this might work in Lexington, but you know.
Yeah, what about us?
Okay, well, I'd enter, we don't have anything else on the agenda, Leanne, right?
We do not.
I'd entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Third.
I'll take a roll call vote, Keith. Jim.
Aye.
That.
Aye.
Rebecca. Susanna?
Yeah, aye. I was like.
So we're adjourned.